Call the Village North Fond du Lac Board of Trustees to order Monday, July 2nd, 2018. Audience members, I requested the sign-in on the sheet provided on the registration table. Citizens wishing to be heard on topics not listed on the agenda may speak under item C. Roll call of officers.
King.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Mr. Peter.
Will.
Yes, here. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements, any announcements? All right, we're gonna move down to President's Business and Staff Reports. We're gonna try to get back into recognizing employees when they have, when they have reached certain amount of time in their service here in the village. We're rec- tonight we're recognizing Heather Wagner, our librarian, June 26th as her anniversary date for 10 years in the village, and Mitch Vies, our Public Projects Coordinator.
This.
This, sorry. June 30th, 10 years with the village, so we congratulate both those employees and thank them for their service, and we're going to do a presentation for our retiring administrator. So we want to congratulate Chuck Horni on his retirement from the Village North Fond du Lac as administrator. Congratulations Chuck. All right, moving down to library. Nick, did you have anything from the library?
I did. Heather was not able to make it tonight, but I do have a report. They concluded their third week of summer reading program on Friday. So far they've had 284 children, 41 teens, and 222 adults participating in the reading challenge. A big thank you to the NFDL Optimists for their $500 donation which allowed children to select a free paperback book for completing the third week of reading. Also, as they have in other years, they're teaming up with the school to offer a summer reading performance over at Bessie Allen on Wednesday, July 25th, in the Nest slash Cafeteria area. That's all she had to report.
Anything from the courts today?
Nothing. That's, I, that's supposed to not be on the first month, first meeting of the month agenda.
Okay.
That was my mistake.
All right. Minister, Chuck's gonna do one last report.
Yes, one last report. Tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM, they're gonna be placing the cut stone that's gonna be placed on the corner of Prospect in Winnebago. Looking forward to that. It's, I think it's gonna be a nice addition to the, to the village. Stewart's is gonna be right behind and start doing some outcropping and planting surrounded as well. Last week we sent out the absentee ballots, and now absentee voting is available in the office starting today, so anybody wishing to do so, come in, make sure you're registered and you're able to vote starting tomorrow. As I mentioned with my retirement, I'm going through the files, just trying to make notes, making sure everything I can pass on to Nick is, is there. We're not leaving town, so if there are any questions, feel free to call. Thank you.
Thank you Chuck.
Thanks Chuck.
All right, we're down to Police Department. Darren.
Thank you. As I mentioned in the weekly report, last week I did make a final offer of employment to a candidate, Joel Yeager. I'm very happy to say that he accepted. His first day with us will be July 17th. Along those lines, we also had a Police and Fire Commission meeting on Thursday. At that meeting, they acknowledged the resignation of Jake Egan, who again is leaving to go to Oconomowoc Lake PD, and they also approved the appointment for Joel Yeager. Excuse me. We also spent quite a bit of time this past week working on issues with our MDCs and arbitrator cameras. We're still trying to troubleshoot the newest one, which is a brand-new version. We had mentioned some time ago that we're gonna look at a different one for the future. We're having a little bit of trouble getting that to sync up quite as well as the other ones, but probably just because we're not as familiar with it, so hopefully we'll get that up and running soon. Over the weekend, I'm actually going back to like Thursday of last week, we had a rash of car entries, vehicle entries during the overnight hours. Fortunately, in most of the cases, the people responsible didn't grab anything of any real value. There was one incident where a laptop was stolen, valued at about $1,000. That has not been recovered. This is just an excellent reminder for people to make sure that you lock your vehicles when they're unattended. So many of these people indicate that they don't lock the vehicle because they don't think there's anything of value in it, but the vehicle itself is valuable, so lock the doors when you're not around your vehicles. And then over the weekend, Friday night, we had a group of teenagers between the ages of 16 and 18 that decided to jump the fence and go for a late-night swim at the village pool. Unfortunately for them, at least somebody in their group decided to videotape it and post it on Snapchat, so we didn't have any issues identifying the people responsible. We've issued nine citations for trespass and curfew violations as a result of that. That's all there.
Thanks Darren. Fire MS, Jake.
Thank you. I forgot to hand them over before. Keith, I'll get you one of our flyers for the mock disaster at the pool. We actually teamed up and added the Backpack Buddies program into that, which means that we're asking people to bring the list of food that is on the sheet and donate it. Backpack Buddies is a program that, if you're familiar with Sherry Banky, she got involved with a group of people and started this, and they help kids in the school district that don't have food to eat or take home, so we will be doing that as well. Starts at 6:30. Flight for Life will be there right around 7:00. And as it says, it's open to the public for free from 5 to 8:00, so come and attend. We'll be doing a live scenario with the lifeguards. We treat it as more of a training for them and let people come watch, so there's that. Last night we went to Ripon, I'm sure you guys may have seen on the news that incident that they had there. We sent, there's some confusion going around thinking that we sent two engines out there, and that wasn't the case. We sent one engine and then our command vehicle, five guys on the engine, and two guys as a red crew, so. We're moving forward with four applicants that applied for part-time staffing. We threw them through background checks, and now they have scheduled their work steps appointments, and we'll get those done, and then get them started here, working on 502. An update on 502, I did meet with Nick, and it seems like the best time because of when I get the paperwork and all that stuff from LifeQuest and can get all the data entered, and he's got that training. It will be August 6th when I bring all the numbers here. We have pretty much all of them except for last month, so. Tornado siren update, they are putting in a new notification system, so what's gonna happen in Fond du Lac County per se, there's a tornado warning just for North Fond du Lac. Now it's gonna be that all of the sirens don't go off, it'll be localized just to North Fond du Lac, so that system is gonna work with the National Weather Service and then County Dispatch to make sure the alerting works properly, and that is all I have.
JCR sirens, all right, doing all right? I mean, they're all working properly?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we typically have American Signal do the maintenance on them, so last year we did it in August, so it's coming up here.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Public Works Department, Darren.
Just a couple of quick things. You'll notice that the Public Works Crew's been out painting early mornings, painting the crosswalks and lane delineations and center line stripes. We still have some to do. Most of the curb work has been, curb painting has been done, and the center lines are done. We still have a few crosswalks to finish up this year. That's something we do every other year. It's something we used to do every year, but we switched types of paint, and we're getting two years out of the paint now before it discolors so bad that you have a hard time seeing it. I've been busy the last couple of weeks getting our annual CCR report into the DNR, and that will be being published, or it's published, it'll be being put in the next utility bills for every resident. CCR is the Consumer Confidence Report. It's a required report from the DNR on our annual, on our testing throughout the year that we're meeting all the DNR requirements with our water system. And then Mitch has been working on the street and parking lot asphalt maintenance, getting ready to bid contracts for doing that work this year.
So Darren, those three benches that you put in over at Village Park, those were donated?
Four benches.
Four benches.
Were donated.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit? At some point, we'll do some recognition. I've asked the, it's a couple that lives over on, I wanna say Main Avenue, somewhere over there, that donated all the money for those, and they didn't want any recognition.
I don't know if anybody's seen them, but they're really nice, 'cause the DVW poured a concrete pad and then they bolted them to the ground. They're really nice benches, and the water runs through them there.
Right.
You have the holes in some of them.
We poured concrete pads so we don't have to mow them when we mow, so they're permanent fixtures, they're not just gonna get tipped over and dragged away and stuff like that.
And then the shelter in Lemieux Park, the roof is on that since spring, hasn't it?
That's been on since spring. We still have a little bit of lighting work. There's electrical outlets in there, but we haven't installed lights underneath there yet.
Okay, all right, thank you, appreciate it. Moving down to item F, Public Hearing. I need a motion in a second to recess until the public hearing is closed. Can I get a motion to recess into the public hearing, please?
I'll make the motion to recess and for ordinance 2018-08, remanding section 21.02 slash six, mobile homes, trailers, boats, mobiles, semis, and buses.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Will, second by King. Does that have to be roll call, or is that?
No, just a majority vote.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, none. We are now recessed into the public hearing for the, for ordinance 2018-8. Is there any comments from the audience on this ordinance? Second time, is there any comments from the audience on this ordinance? And third time, any comments from the audience? All right. So now the public hearing is in, and we are back in the regular board meeting.
You just have to officially close the public hearing at 6:14.
Oh, okay, we officially closed the public hearing at 6:14, and we are back in the regular board meeting. Moving down to consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the following board meetings from June 14, 2018, and June 28, 2018. Approve invoices and authorized checks to be drawn on their respective funds. General Fund, $68,301.10. Outdoor Rec, $1,578.53. North Fondue Fest, $4,120.05. Library Fund, $425.06. EMS Fund, $4,781.50. Water Department, $10,021.01. Waste Water Department, $590.39. Community Development Authority, TIF, $17.27. Stormwater Fund, $756.18 for a grand total of $90,572.89. And approve the following driver's, following operator's license. Don Kabitski, permanent for rumors. What is your pleasure?
I think I'm watching it to assert the consent agenda, right?
And a second?
I second that motion.
Got a motion by King, second by Price. Any discussion, any questions on bills? I had, I wonder if I can get this thing come up. All righty. Nick, or are you doing them, or is it Chuck?
Well, we'll see what the question is.
Questions, all right. So vendor 305, I don't know if it's easier for everybody else, Chuck, when I've been signing checks lately, the checks have a vendor number on it, so it's just a little bit easier to find, and they are in order, so it's vendor number 305 on page two on the bottom for, let's see, for 32, for $3,257, what is that for the airing equipment?
Airing equipment, that's for our end loader.
Okay.
We had a problem with the hydraulic system on there.
Okay.
The hydraulic accumulator failed, and its solenoid valve failed on it.
And that was in your weekly report also, wasn't it?
Yes. They had made a couple of trips here along with taking parts back to Green Bay for repair.
Okay, okay, thanks. And maybe this one for you too, Darren, on page three, the vendor 871 for Casper's Truck Equipment, is that?
Casper's Truck Equipment, that was the Mack Patrol truck that was damaged in the snowplowing accident this winter, so this money was all paid back. We had already received the check from the insurance company. We were just waiting for a time to get the truck in there to get the repairs done to the, to the wing mount.
Okay.
The bodywork to the cab had already been done by Lyle's Autobody.
Okay, thanks. Ann?
And I just had a couple of questions on page four, RMM Solutions. I was just wondering if you can do that, or do they do?
That's the company that's gonna start doing the management IT.
Oh, okay. And then I just had another question on page six, Packer City International Trucks for $2,623. Is that top of the page?
Yeah, that's the steering box for Med 502.
That's all I had, thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing no other questions, all in favor approving consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Administrative. Number one, discussion and review of the Personnel Policy Manual, chapters 13 to whatever we get to.
Do you wanna wait to talk about this until we get to those chapters?
Yeah, we can, let's see, well, we can just.
I was asked to put together some comparables. We did with, in regards to some of the information that's in these chapters with longevity, sick leave, funeral leave, and then vacation, those are kind of the benefits that are in this part of it, and we emailed, I think, 22 communities, we had responses from whatever is on here, I think it's nine or eight, and I tried to assemble the data that's, that was available and make it somewhat easy to read. The other thing that's in here is a spreadsheet on the impact of the longevity change that was proposed, and I don't know if we wanna just wait, you know, we should probably work our way through the personnel policy, but that's what I would have handed out earlier.
Everybody get that information? All right. All right, so we'll just start chapter 13 where we left off, Grievance Procedure, a couple of changes. Does anybody have any questions on the grievance procedure?
1302 Administration, a question I got is, Village Administrator shall supervise and administer the grievance process as specified by the union contract, and I, we all don't have, they all don't have union contracts. That's my question there.
Isn't that why it says "and" here in?
What'd you say?
Isn't that why it says "and" here in?
Mm-hmm.
I can't hear what you're saying.
Is it, says after the union contract, "and here in," to, like, cover the folks that aren't, that don't have a union contract, is that what that?
Is that what your understanding is?
Yep.
All right, just. 1304, question, any Village employee, a group of employees, do we allow groups of employees to come and file grievance, or is that, is that like a union thing, or would we expect them to do it under their joint?
I guess I don't see why they couldn't as a group if there was a.
'Cause that's kinda like a union thing, I think, I'm not sure, I'm just how the board feels about it, I mean.
Have we ever had anything like that, or?
Not that I'm aware of.
We have in the Police Department.
Like, like a group, and then you just have a spokesman?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Keith, I guess I don't have an issue with it, I mean, you know, I mean, if they feel they have a group, grievance as a group, I don't see an issue with them coming to their supervisor.
Well, I mean, as long as they follow the grievance procedure.
As long as they follow the procedures and be respectful about it.
To like, to start with your department head and so forth.
Okay, sort it out there.
Was it, what's it, like, what was it concerned by, just like, like, like a, would they have like a spokesperson, or is it like?
Well, I would hope they, because it's really not a union shop majority, but the union people have their avenue, but I mean, I don't know.
I mean, just as, I mean, I, just as long as they follow procedure, you know, that's outlined in 1305, I, you know, work their way up the chain if it gets, you know, however far it gets.
I guess, I mean, it doesn't say it in there, but I don't, maybe I'm misinterpreting what your concern is well, but I don't think that anybody would, any department head would say, you know, well, I've got this grievance from these three people, you're not a part of it, I'm not interested in what you have to say. If that employee still wants to be a part of it, and for whatever reason wasn't in on the initial grievance, he or she would certainly have the opportunity to either come on board or file their own separate grievance. It's not like you're just out of the mix, because, I mean, I think I heard you say majority rule or whatever, and it's not like, it's not like three people can decide we're filing grievance on behalf of everybody. It's just a matter of, if you have three people who are subject to the same grievance, it makes it a lot easier than doing three separate grievance procedures.
But where's the little bit of one employee rallying the troops, and, you know, as Mike would say, leaders coming in, and, you know, they're all standing on their own two feet and, you know, our grievance or a group grievance so that we don't have someone just, you know, come with me, my concern.
Are there any other, any other questions or concerns in chapter 13 for the grievance procedure?
Are we gonna do the whole chapter? I have a question about 1307, but on the next page.
Yep.
So 1307 says employee representation, says and employees entitled to be represented in each of the steps. I guess how do we, would we see that working? Is that more like, I guess, a union thing? Is there a representation for someone not in the union? How would that work?
I think it's more of, I mean, if I'm filing a grievance, I'm entitled to have a representative, my attorney or something with me.
So you would provide that?
Yeah, that doesn't, that's my take on this, that I'm allowed to do that, but.
And it doesn't have to be just an attorney either, I mean, a person's allowed to bring anybody in, basically as a witness, is what it boils down to.
Do you feel like the wording in here talks more like, I guess, a union representation and doesn't?
My guess is the wording is probably like standard boilerplate language that you find pretty much everywhere you go.
Because it says they're entitled to be represented.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think we gotta include that just because we still have the police union.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean.
But if you're not in the union, are you entitled to be represented?
We can still get someone to represent herself, you know.
Or if you're allowed to be represented?
Allowed versus entitled, is it what you're?
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha.
I mean, that to me means that you get some sort of representation, which in the union you do, but I think if you're not in the union, I don't think the compa- the bill provides you representation.
Oh, yeah, I see, it could be interpreted as that maybe provided, gotcha.
Should we change it to be allowed, or should we, I guess, differentiate between union and non-union employees?
I think that's something we should probably check with legal counsel on, to be honest.
That's, that's a good idea.
If we wanna change it. I'm sure we will have a running list of these legal questions, I know there were some already, so.
Is there any other questions on chapter 13 for grievances? Seeing none, moving on to chapter 14, Working Conditions. Are there any questions on chapter 14? Ann.
I just have a question of 1405, restrictions, just the paragraph actually just kind of ends. And also, I mean, just from a formatting perspective, it's in, indented the rest of the letters in A to Z and DR, but just that paragraph D is just, doesn't really end.
Hello? Yeah.
Yeah, I missed, which, where were you, which?
So this is 1405, use of cellular telephones, and then if you go down under restrictions.
So page 40.
Yep, point D, employees who are using cellular forms of performance, but then the paragraph just stopped at devices R. Whenever possible, employees should pull off the road in a safe location when they.
Used?
Yeah, something like that.
I guess.
Go ahead. Oh, are you, is that all you had in, or?
Uh, yes.
Wait, did you?
1403, inclement weather, you had this paid leave time. Okay, I mean, that wouldn't include sick leave, would it?
Unless they're sick.
What's that?
Unless they're sick, yeah, but it's just, it was just summarizing the, no.
Okay, that would, that would not include sick leave, because they're spelled out how that is addressed. I'm actually out of our term here.
That wouldn't be an allowable, if you look under sick leave, it wouldn't be an allowable leave.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's where I was questioning it, yep. Again, I'm gonna go back to page 30 at the top, the first sentence, and it says according to labor contracts, and I just, I don't think this is the whole village, you know, I mean, most employees don't have contracts.
I think it's trying to encompass both the needs of the department and according to labor's contracts. That's both.
Does anybody have any?
I have a couple other.
Go ahead, Ann.
1405, travel, letter H, but it talks about IRS reimbursement of travel that doesn't involve an overnight stay is taxable. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, it's the, it's part of your income.
If they give you meals, then you didn't have to stay overnight.
Like mileage reimbursed.
Mileage reimbursement is reimbursement for costs incurred, though, I mean, it's not like you're making any, I just, I didn't know, I don't know, or didn't know if that was correct or not.
I'll run that by Chris, I mean, that would be up her alley, so I'll ask her about that, just to make sure it's right.
Yeah, 'cause you're being reimbursed, I guess, for costs that you're outweighing as, you know, for traveling, so I guess that just doesn't make any sense to me, but I'm no expert, I just.
I know meals with, yeah, Keith is first.
Keith.
I think Ann's, excuse me, I think Ann's correct, I have an expense account. I get paid mileage, I get paid meals, everything, when I'm on the road, it's cost incurred. I don't get double taxed on that, I mean, you might wanna check, but I don't, they just give me a check for whatever I spend.
We'll check with Chris and make sure that whatever the IRS requires isn't in there.
I know with the state, we get taxed on our meals for sure, for sure, I'm not sure about travel, so.
Does, do we enforce the smoking policy that not allowed within 40 feet of any public entrance to all public buildings? Do we enforce that? It's on 1407, sorry, number one.
No, because it's not currently policy.
I mean, I'm sorry, how are you not, like, enforce, I know we don't have a lot of smokers, but.
Once the, if the policy is passed, then we will just let everyone know.
It's, I'd like that addition on there.
I just have a couple more, so 1411 meals, there's a dollar amount in there, and it looks like it comes from IRS publication. Do you think it would be maybe more helpful to reference?
Does, um, do we enforce the smoking policy that not allowed within forty feet of any public entrance to all public buildings? Do we enforce that? It's on fourteen oh seven, sorry. Number one.
No, because it's not currently policy.
I mean, oh, I'm sorry, how, how are you, you know, like, uh, enforce, I know we, we don't have a lot of smokers, but.
Once the, if the policy is passed, then we will just let everyone know.
Just, okay. It's, uh, I'd like that addition on there. Ann?
I just have a couple more. So, uh, fourteen eleven, meals, there's a dollar amount in there, and it looks like it comes from IRS publication. Do you think it would be maybe more helpful to reference the publication itself as opposed to putting the rates in there so that this doesn't have to get updated all the time? Is it like a website you pull it off of or something?
I, yes, but I believe the discussion, if I recall, and somebody can try and help me out here. I think the IRS publication simply says fifty-one dollars a day. And I think we were trying to take that and break it down. If I, do you recall the discussion?
There was a discussion on that, yeah.
That's what I recall, that we were trying to break it down, so, you know, if they get fifty-one dollars a day to try and break it down.
Could you use a percentage instead, like use the rate in the IRS and a percentage for breakfast, lunch, and dinner? And the, I mean, just, I'm just thinking about updating this.
Yeah, and we tried, you're, you're exactly right, because we tried to do that in other areas of the, to try not to put numbers in here that need to be changed all the time.
Yeah.
So is the IRS pub, publication, is that like based on a certain area? Because I mean, that, I mean, it seems high to me, you know, like, for, like, for that type of per diem for. Do, who, who uses that? Do, do we have anybody that travels? I mean, besides Jerry and?
Not a case, yeah. I mean, people that go to conferences and.
That's a maximum that they're allowed to adopt, is that correct? So it doesn't mean that we have to go to that level. That's the max.
That's the max.
If you live in, if you live in New York or something, I can understand that, but I think it's, I think it's, I think it's hard myself.
Yeah, I suppose that's kind of hard to base that when you, you know, when it's a IRS publication. Does anybody have any other questions or comments on fourteen, chapter fourteen?
Well, again, I just want to, do we want to stay at those maximum rates that we, that we've been charged? It doesn't mean, if there's, they go places that's over that amount, they can, they can request a higher amount. But, um, twenty-five dollars for dinners would have been, I think.
Keith?
I gotta step in here. I travel a lot, as you all know. And I'm not gonna eat at McDonald's and KFC and Taco Bell for supper and stay at ten to fifteen dollars. I think if people are traveling on their job, I think they have the right to go to a restaurant and have a decent meal. I mean, I don't think twenty-five dollars is out of hand.
Randy?
I agree with Keith. I, I've traveled enough in, in the past and, um, I think these, these rates are very much in line. Um, if you go to a conference, um, down to Milwaukee, if you stay at one of the, you know, get the, in downtown by the convention center, the, like, you're not gonna get. You, you might get a sandwich if you, but, I mean, I really think it's appropriate that, I, I don't have an issue with these, with these rates. If you go to the Hilton, if you're staying at the Hilton for a fire conference or an EMS conference, um, you're gonna pay eleven bucks or more for breakfast. That's, I don't have an issue with these, with these prices.
Any other comments on, uh, chapter fourteen? All right, moving on to chapter fifteen, compensation. Anybody have any comments on chapter fifteen? Ann?
I have a comment from fifteen oh two, which is pay period. It says timesheets are to be submitted to the payroll department within thirty days of the date of service was rendered. Is that applicable to everybody, or are they only talking to like, uh, maybe people from number two? So I guess, I would just tell you guys, how many times do you have to review?
Two weeks.
Randy?
She corrected me if I'm wrong, but wasn't that, wasn't there any, or whoever was on that committee? Wasn't there an issue with, um, people from the paid on call folks, um, not handing, they'd hand two or three in? And then, you know, they would not be timely. So I think that's why, where maybe where this came from is that, uh, they were, you know, for lack of a better term, they just didn't hand it in. And then they kind of store them up for two or three months and then, you know, so I think that's, maybe that's where, where that came from.
So should we change to pay down call, timesheet should be submitted?
I, I think if I may, the other, I think the other thing that plays into that is, is just to make it the same for everybody, because we do every two weeks, normally, everybody's every two weeks. But on occasion, if somebody's on vacation and they don't turn in their timesheet, they, they don't get paid that payroll, it allows them.
Oh, really?
You know what I mean? If that happens, like, this allows them thirty days from their.
So if you aren't turning in, you don't get paid?
Well, if, if that happens, I mean, there's, there's these deadlines, and usually Chris hunts people down. But if she, you know, in some cases, if she doesn't have it, she can't make that payment, so.
Okay.
I think it was trying to simplify it.
Okay.
And I think there was, was there some issue with the PD two with the time? Because your, your pay periods are different than.
Yeah, the pay periods are slightly different, um, from everybody else's. But also, uh, going back to what you were just saying, um, with that, you know, the example I used, where if somebody's on vacation, what'll typically happen is that it'll just be processed for that pay period at their base pay. So anything that they worked in excess of that or whatever won't be on there, and it's up to them then to get it submitted and turned around. And we want to have that happen in a timely period, so Chris isn't stuck trying to change that three months down the line.
Okay.
Is that all you had, Ann? Anybody else? This is where we're gonna address, uh, is it, is it longevity pay? Is it less than near twice or just a chapter? Is this the place we're working on?
This is it.
This is it.
Where it is.
So everybody got a, um, the handouts with the longevity pay, the longevity impact of the proposed, um, increase to two dollars a month? So you have the information in front of you, so this is the, uh, this is the time to comment on that, fifteen point zero six. I mean, I, um, for me, I, I mean, I asked around for different, you know, different folks, um, different companies, you know, um, public, you know, public employees, finding out that, you know, most companies don't offer a longevity pay. I mean, I think, I. What is fueling the bump? Does, what's fueling the, the two dollar, or bump up to two dollars?
I think the discussion from the staff level, department heads, was that it's, it's always, it creates a lot of, I won't say heartburn, but just it, it, because it was two dollars for certain people and one dollar, or twenty-five dollars a year for certain people, one dollar for everybody else. And I think this was in some effort to try and simplify it. And I think it was just a question of, you know, it's, it's not a lot of money and it's at one dollar, yeah, at twenty years, it's two hundred and forty dollars. That's, you know, that's the payment, and I think that was part of the discussion to it. It's been that way for a long time.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it staying at like where it's at. I think we, I think that we take care of our employees really well. And, um, I mean, I don't, I mean, who knows we're gonna, what this budget looks like this year. I mean, this may be something we look at down the road when we get to budget, you know, I mean, I don't, I have no idea, I don't have crystal balls. So, I mean, I think, personally, I think it's fair to stay at where it's at. So I'm just wondering what the rest of the board is thinking after you look at the impact. I know it's like, it's only five thousand dollars, but it's like, it's still an impact on the, you know, budget too.
Sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
Could I explain? I'll just explain this longevity impact, just so, because I'm sure there's some questions on what, what's all going on here. So in putting this impact together, I realized that the allocation of how the longevity was being paid was probably not as good as it should be. It's, it's, it's old. There's certain people that move into different positions and their payment, they're paid out of utilities and, and different things at different percentages than what used to be. So basically what I did is I took the wage calculation sheet, which takes everybody in the village and shows how much percentage they're paid out of each of these funds and reallocated. So that's the first two columns, it'd be the current allocation. And the second column would be if it's reallocated like it should be. So what you see is there's actually a, a reduction in the general fund portion at twelve thousand six forty-four would be the new current cost. And then the final column is the, what's proposed in here at the two dollars and per month. So those two numbers in bold, then on the top, would be the general fund addition. The first number being if we, if we kept the same, but we're actually, we're gonna reallocate it no matter what happens. So really, the general fund impact is that thirty-two hundred, thirty-two forty-three eighty-six. And then down below is the, what I call enterprise fund, so you have the utilities along with the EMS, because they're really self-funded. Does that make sense?
Does anybody on the way in?
I'd like to say a few things. Um, I know there was some difference with the EMS, the ones that were, used to be volunteers or paid on call. They were at two dollars, right?
It's twenty, theirs was twenty-five dollars a year.
And then, but it came out to be a little bit more than.
Yeah.
A little bit more than two dollars. And then, but also, some of those employees went to part-time or regular part-times and they kept that, is that correct?
I believe so.
Part-time stays the same. Once you get into a full-time role, then it switches. So part-time and paid on call.
The.
Are twenty-five.
Did that switch, did that switch happen? I mean, I don't.
Yeah, every time somebody goes full-time, it, it happens. Chris knows that.
Right, I'm just.
So it's all documented.
What was the heartburn about some people getting two and getting one? Do you know, people were volunteers or very limited paid employees?
Well, I think it was a, a budget issue, I mean, not a budget, but there was a discussion about that every year about, you know, some employees that go full-time. They were part-time at one point, and then they lose that because they were at one time an on-call. And then the other, it's just gen, generally village-wide, you know, some employees don't understand why they get one dollar and, and people that are part-time get two dollars or twenty-five dollars a year.
Yeah, they weren't, they weren't getting paid very much, so they weren't, you know.
No, either way, it's not a lot.
Well, I'm saying, but these other employees doing a service for the village, they weren't.
Right, well, right, I, I understand that.
Full-time employees are getting compensated, you know, at a different rate, so.
And I think overall, too, this was just a simple fact, because then there is no keeping track of all of this. When people change, it's just one, one rate.
Because I wasn't in favor of increasing it. I mean, the one person, to keep it to one dollar for everybody? And, uh, you know, there was somebody that froze it, I've seen here in the past. And we do have some, as wage scales are, there's, there's pay increases for years of service. I mean, I know when you get to seven years or so, or five years, it's, um, tense, but there is some incentive for longevity.
Anybody else on the way in?
I just have a comment.
Ann?
I guess, I mean, the purpose of this is to get people to stay with the village, right? Because they want a longevity for.
Well, I think it's to reward people that have been here a while, a long time, but yes, it's part of that, yeah, same thing.
Do you feel like it does that?
I think it's part of it. You know, I don't think it's, that, that one check isn't gonna keep people alone.
Right.
But I think it's a nice, it's a nice, I, I don't know, a lot of people like it, it comes around Thanksgiving time and.
Sure.
Yep.
Randy or Keith, any comments or?
I think maybe just a comment too. I think one other change that, it was incorporated in this, that we waited a long before they would actually start gaining, was it three years?
Yep.
So, I mean, it, it also delayed starting that longevity as well.
Can this analysis, we did that?
No, it's actually in the policy, it's, yeah. I think we tried to clean up too, where if somebody would leave January second, they would get a whole nother, um, longevity check as well.
Yeah, I think we, sorry, it, it's not highlighted on here, but Chuck's right. In the first sentence, it says thirty-six months. It, that used to be, there was no time limit. At year one, you got a longevity check.
Yeah, see, it's added in four B, and then.
All these small things do add up after a while. I mean, well, a lot of time, every time we talk, it's two, three thousand here, two, three thousand there. All these things do add up after time.
So this is one of those things we need to have a consensus where we want to be, um, at, so we can make the change in the policy if need be. So what is, uh, everybody thinking? Do you need a motion for that, or?
Well, this whole thing will eventually be adopted.
Yeah.
But that's up to you, I think, for, I, I think to put the changes in here for adoption, we should have a consensus. Would be my suggestion.
So I, I guess a consensus, has, has anybody had any other questions on this or any comments?
When did, I just have, when was this dollar just, I mean, is it always paying like this? This dollar, I mean, oh, okay.
We've been here the longest. Darren?
As long as I've been here, it's been one dollar per month.
How many years have you been here?
Twenty-eight.
Really? Wow. That's awesome. You guys ready for, uh, consensus?
I, I, I do believe that the fire EMS, they get paid, if they're in both departments, they get paid longevity twice. Not anymore.
It used to.
It used to be.
It was.
And the twenty-five is just for part-time and part-time on call?
It's only for, yes, correct, part-time and paid on call. Full-time is one dollar.
I think what Mike said, I mean, they don't, I mean, they don't get the benefits or whatever. I mean, so to compare them getting twenty-five dollars and me getting a dollar, it doesn't seem like a fair comparison because they don't get all the benefits that, that you do.
A lot of those guys really look forward to it, and I know Randy knows that. That time of the year is a crunch for money and they dedicate a lot of time down here, so a lot of unpaid time too.
And again, we could be talking about this, that budget, I mean, I know it's come up in years past, you know, you know. So, um, so is there any other discussion you want, you guys ready for a consensus, or?
I have no problem with, uh, paid volunteers staying there too. I have no, no issue with that.
So you're saying you want to just leave it the way it currently is?
Yep.
Okay, so Mike would like to leave it the way it currently is. Randy?
Well, I would like to see an increase, but it, with, with, if, if we have to make some, you know, when it comes to budget time, we may have to revisit this. And I, I, especially when it comes to the, you know, the volunteers and, you know, they spend a lot of time down here. I think it's, you know, we need to maybe recognize that again. I mean, if, if, if we're looking at a, um, a budget time, we may have to take a look at this. But at this point, I'm, I don't have an issue with, with two dollars.
Okay. Okay. Um, I'm, I'm fine with the way that it's at currently. Ann?
And the one dollar? I, I would agree. I'm fine with the way I'm.
I agree with Randy.
So we got a consensus, three to, two to say where we're currently at. Is there anything else in, um, chapter fifteen, compensation, that anybody has a question or, or, uh, wants to discuss any of the changes?
What chapter are we on?
We're still on fifteen. All right, seeing, uh, seeing no flags up, we will move on to chapter sixteen, eligibility for benefits.
The only, the one thing I didn't start this conversation with is I don't know if we want to set a time limit every night when we start these conversations. And we don't, we don't know how far we're gonna get. We don't necessarily have to get through everything, but.
What is your goal to wrap this up by?
Fate. That was Chuck's, that was Chuck's goal. We don't even have all the chapters here right now, so. And we could play it by year every night too. I mean, I don't know.
I, I mean, does the board have a, have a preference? I mean, do we want to set a time limit, a half hour, forty-five minutes on each time we can take a look at this? I mean.
I think originally, originally we did talk about that. We talked about a timeline of what's half an hour or something, but I think, if I'm wrong, I thought we did talk about that.
Okay, yeah, I can remember.
So where are we at right now? I mean, where are we at, half an hour?
Probably at twenty minutes, fifteen, twenty minutes.
Let's go up until seven o'clock and, uh, any, we'll, we'll jump into chapter sixteen. Anybody have any questions, uh, Mike?
I've got some clarification. I, I think, I see it, permanent or regular employees, is that, what is the difference there? I see, I, I mean, uh, we go on from the first part, there's this permanent position.
Those, those, all those.
Regular position, I mean, what, what's the difference there? That's my first question.
The definitions are, and I don't know if I have it with me, to be honest, the. The definitions are, and I don't know if I have it with me, to be honest, the beginning, um, chapters we already went over have those definitions. I don't know.
I go back, I got them with me, I can, I can look at them myself. The next thing is, I see a lot of half hour, not half time, regular part-time positions, over twenty hours, benefit package, they're gonna be open to more benefits, is that correct? Something like the librarian, is that correct? Is that, do I read that right?
Well, the librarian currently has.
What is, what is, what is their issue where she doesn't receive all the benefits at thirty-seven hours?
The, that those pertain to, like, vacation and sick leave, not necessarily, like, not, not health insurance, things like that, but it's.
Is it pro-rated?
Yes.
That she don't like that?
That's correct, it's pro-rated.
So, she's pretty close to full-time.
Thirty-seven and a half, is it?
They spent on her agenda a long time, what, you know what their issues, Chuck, is?
It's mainly sick time, because right now, if you're part-time, you only get fifty percent, so you get four hours.
So, it's not.
Four hours a month.
That's not pro-rated, vacation is pro-rated, sick time is not.
So, my question is, all these positions over in transport, uh, transport, these part-timers are all gonna be that same benefit, so I guess, I don't know.
No.
I could be wrong, I don't know.
No, they're not, that's, that's their classification.
I'm just, I mean, if, we're gonna, we're gonna increase that, I guess I'd like to know the financial impact to that, I mean, I don't know how many employees we're talking about, are you, you know, what's that, three, which, who, who are they?
Two in the library, Chris.
Okay.
It's only three.
Alright.
They're getting, they, they're getting sick time now, but in the case of Heather, who was thirty-seven out of forty hours, she was getting.
She only gets the four hours, so the, if the biggest thing is the sick leave.
It is.
And that's the only thing?
Vacation is pro-rated, based on the prior years, how many hours you work. So, vacation is already calculated based on how many hours per week. So, if you work, let's say thirty hours a week, and you get four weeks of vacation, you get thirty hours, four weeks, hundred and twenty.
I think it makes sense, it's fair, I was just wondering how many, I thought your employees would be pulled in there too.
No.
You have part-timers, so what makes them different?
The number of hours that they work and how are their scheduled. So, if they were scheduled Monday, Wednesday, Friday, every single week, for fifty-two weeks in a year, then it would be regular part-time position, but they're not scheduled like that, they're scheduled based off availability. We, I, I don't know how many hours, talked to Chris about that when we started five oh two.
Twelve hundred's a magic number, then we have to pay WRS.
And they, they, do they stay under that, do you?
Yeah, we've had, uh, one guy go over, and the last person would have been myself.
So, can that person come back and get all those benefits?
Just the WRS, cause he's still not regularly scheduled.
Okay. Hopefully we have it spelled all good, then.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Chris was pretty clear about that.
Is there any other questions on chapter sixteen for eligibility for benefits?
I have a question on, I mean, going down to disability duty, employees using paid off time to subject holiday vacation cannot remain on the village health insurance as an active employee. Is that, is that legal, or is that, I mean, they're on paid, uh, leave for the village, why would they still be eligible for health insurance? Unless I'm reading it wrong.
You're on what, which, which one are you on?
Number five, sixteen oh five, duty disability, yeah, number five addition.
So, they're still on paid leave, and they're telling me that they can't stay on health insurance if they're on this leave after.
I'm assuming that had to come from Chris, Chuck, and.
Cause they're really not receiving any pay check.
But they are kind of, aren't they?
They've used up all of the sick leave, so it's really in and out at work, right? They've used it all up.
Used it all.
So, would it be clearer, like, if you put employees that have used up paid time off? It sounds like they're still in the process of.
I think what it's basically doing is it's prohibiting somebody from staying on the payroll and plugging in all of that time off, just to extend their time here for the purpose of main, of staying on the insurance. So, basically, if you're not planning on coming back to work on July first, you can't put in for twenty-one days of vacation in the month, that we would never allow an active employee to do that, so why would we allow somebody who's on their way out the door to do that? Makes sense?
It does kind of, and I think that, I don't know, I think they have that right to do that.
I don't, they have the right to be paid out for that time, they don't have the right to sit and plug it in a day at a time and stay on payroll.
You have to look at the heading.
Duty disability.
What is, does that mean you have to work at work? What does duty disability do?
I would think so.
Yeah, disa- disability, any disability. I'll ask Chris on that one. Just to make sure that we're legally.
Yep.
That was definitely added.
Yeah, and I know that came from Chris, and I don't, it's, we probably talked about that six months ago, so I don't recall that discussion.
You can probably go on COGRA or something after, right?
Yeah.
And we do allow that.
I, I know myself, I could do vacation, I couldn't, I, I probably could do state leave too, I mean, if it was approved.
And your comp.
Huh?
State can carry their comp over from year to year too.
Yeah, very limited comp anymore, but it's okay. But, uh, you check, check with, uh, Chris or legal, whatever, I mean, just, I think they have that right, but I, they're just.
Alright, anything else in, uh, chapter sixteen, eligibility for benefits? Alright, moving on to chapter seventeen, holidays, any questions on holidays?
I guess, uh, I think I might, sorry, I have to jump in. So, why, why, why is, uh, you know, I guess.
Christmas Day.
I'm looking at the I A F F, are they have different terminology, spring break compared to Easter Sunday, what, why, why the difference?
I guess, we, we always work holidays, so, they have office up front, and I'm sure the leases, uh, unions got the same thing written in theirs, cause we actually work the holiday, there's guys here, so, they gotta get paid for that. Cause that would say that, like, if I work Friday, and my coworker works Sunday, actually Easter, then I would actually get paid in holiday pay, and he wouldn't, and he's actually working the holiday.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I thought you just got holiday, I thought you just get paid double, like, you get paid the holiday and, or working.
Yeah, we get, yeah, so, but we actually have to work on the holiday.
Sure, but you both would get paid the holiday, but one of you would get paid for working, and one of you would get paid.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
But, uh, Monday through Friday job doesn't necessarily work on the holiday, so it has to be the observed holiday that you, that you observe it and get paid for that, versus twenty-four seven, departments have to recognize the actual holiday itself versus the observed holiday, does that make sense? Not really?
Oh, are we adding this, I guess?
So, that was never, because the, there's, there's a, there's one or two individuals that are not covered under the union contracts in the fire and EMS, so we have to have them covered in this personnel. Human resources manual, sorry.
One less is for one, one less is for one person, people, and one less is for another.
Yeah, for firefighters on the right, and everybody else is on the left.
Okay.
Any other, uh, questions on chapter seventeen, holidays?
Seventeen oh three, I guess, I don't know why we just couldn't strike that whole thing, I don't understand why, I'm sure we could do that at any time, so, does that even have to be in there?
Well, I think that gives you the option to do it.
We can do it no matter what, do it however. Stay with them, you can't, you know, why they have to stay in there. Change policy anytime. My question is, are you trying to shrink it or clean it up and then, you know?
I think if that's something that the village board would do at some point, it should stay in there, because then it's the policy that you can follow. I mean, I, I can't think of a good example right now, but I'm sure there's situations where the death of somebody really significant or something like that, you know, where the village board would decide to close the offices and call it a holiday.
Okay, I'm just going off the discussion.
Any other questions on seventeen, chapter seventeen for, uh, holidays? Anything else? Alright, moving on to chapter eighteen, vacations.
I also put together, on the sheet that says benefits comparisons on the top, on the bottom, it says, there's a vacation for those same communities, and it's just a large chart with a bunch of numbers on it, but, pretty much, the summary of it is, everybody's almost the same, I mean, everybody pretty much maxes out at twenty-five, five weeks at, between twenty and twenty-five years, some of them earned a little differently earlier on, some of them earn it, you know, we do seven-year gaps, some of them have five-year gaps, two-year gaps, but, I guess, comparing all of them together, they're pretty much all the same.
Does anybody have any questions on, uh, chapter eighteen for vacations?
I just have a question, uh, eighty-one, I guess I'm going to, over by EMS, uh, you have that new scale, I mean, could you, your, your days are different, right?
Correct.
Right? How long, how, your shifts are sixteen?
Twenty-four hour shifts. So, they work fifty-six hours a week, fifty-three regular pay, and three hours overtime?
Okay. So, three weeks, eight working days, does that, does that come out the same as fifteen working days?
Uh, Chris makes it so it does, essentially, so they get, instead, they wouldn't get eight weeks off, they'd get two weeks off.
So, you have, you have eight working days at twenty-four, I think, I wanna make sure we stay consistent with.
Bless you.
Our hours get, so if we have two weeks of vacation, that means we get a hundred and twenty hours, correct? I believe, hundred and twenty is. Two.
Five working days, is that it?
Yeah. Does that make sense?
So.
So, we were.
Twenty-four times five.
Correct.
Everybody else is getting, uh.
Five working days.
Right, so they're getting, you actually getting more.
More hours, yeah, but we also work twenty-four hour shifts, so, it, what's that?
But you're getting more vacation time than the rest of them.
Correct, yeah. We work two hundred and forty hours in a month, they typically work a hundred and twenty, a hundred and sixty.
A hundred and sixty. This is the same that's in the contract, correct?
Yep.
Well, it's in the police department too, in the police department contract, uh, those, you know, and here it says two weeks is ten working days, in the police department, two weeks is twelve working days, because they work six days, six-day rotations, so there's an extra day because, otherwise, essentially, you wouldn't get a week off of work like everybody else does, you'd only get five days, and you have to come back for a day. And then, and it's kind of the same thing with his hours.
But then, at the end of the day, you can say you're an employee, uh, from public works, you're gonna get, first, the first year, you're gonna get eighty hours, and, okay, well, let's use the same example from your, your, how many hours do you get on your place for?
One week, it's a hundred and twenty hours.
Do the forty hours more. Right?
Or two weeks, sorry.
Two weeks.
Two weeks is a hundred and twenty hours.
Okay, so, the PD, I mean, do they have, do they get more than eighty hours in?
If, if this was the police department thing, at two weeks, they would have ninety-six hours.
Ninety-six hours, so.
But, when that all went into play, way back in whatever that was, that's when everybody else in the village, and I don't know where it is in here, but floating holidays, everybody gets four floaters, police department employees only get two. To offset, to offset the vacation time.
Yeah, we get two as well.
You get two, okay, that brings it down to. Off one. I mean, I take away the sixteen.
Well, it'd be, it'd be seventy-two, if you take forty-eight hours. So, if they get four days, and we get two, that's forty-eight hours, so that takes us down to seventy-two, off of one twenty. Does that make sense?
Is everybody, all the departments good with, you know, the, the.
Yeah, we're good.
Location?
It's been this way for a long time.
The only other change that I don't have on here that I just thought it was, Director of Engineering and Planning is listed on number two, and that will be changed to Director of Public Services, Darren will be attending the board meetings, so, he would get that additional week.
Any other questions on chapter eighteen?
Is there some way you could update, uh, I guess wording, instead of listing the position?
We did that once, and I think it needed to be clear, because there was, it, it says, cause otherwise, it was too vague saying if you're required to be at board meetings, and then, there was some discussion, and some, some past employees that kind of abused that, I think.
Okay.
I think it should stay in there.
And you might hear that at the library board, they brought that up at the last meeting.
And I wasn't referring to that, but there.
But, that, that's part of it too, so, you might hear that, in different areas, so that, yeah, that's good, that, that's defined. So, anything else on chapter eighteen, vacations, any other questions, comments, concerns? Alright, moving up to, uh, chapter nineteen, do you guys wanna get through chapter twenty and call it a night? Do you guys wanna continue at the next board meeting, your pleasure, where you could ask for it?
I'm gonna get through it.
Get up to, everybody good, get up through twenty? You guys alright with that? Alright, alright, chapter nineteen, sick leave. Got a couple changes in here, anybody have any questions or comments on the sick leave, or in chapter nineteen?
I will just mention again, I have a comparison that was, that was one of the things that was put on that sheet. Um, if you look at the benefits comparison in the center, I'm sorry, in the top, the center box is sick leave, and the first column is how often you, you earn that, everybody's exactly the same, one day per month. Second column is how much you can accumulate, at what point you start sort of losing it, so to speak. We're at a hundred and twenty days, and if, as you look down, it's, that's pretty similar to everybody else. There is quite a bit of difference when you go to the payout. So, what I did is I just took, because reading all these, it's kind of hard to compare apples to apples, so what I did is I just said, let's say there's somebody that's maxed out their sick time, and they're making thirty bucks an hour, and they leave, what is their payout when they leave? So, if you look down that, that last column there, you see seventy-five hundred, all the way down to twenty-eight hundred, twenty-eight thousand, and we're at seventy-two hundred, so we're definitely, as far as the comparables, we're definitely in the low end there.
Randy?
Uh, just, and, I apologize for the question. So, is there, so, right now, employees get a day a month?
Yes.
What is their max that they can accumulate?
One twenty, hundred and twenty days, which is nine hundred and sixty hours.
So, they can, a hundred and twenty, okay. After they reach the hundred and twenty, they, if they get no more.
Correct, so if you, if you earn twelve more days that year, you'd normally be at a hundred and thirty-two, you're still one twenty.
One twenty, okay.
Correct.
So, when they separate.
Yep.
What, what, what do they, what would they get then?
Seven, well, if they had a hundred and twenty days.
They had a hundred and twenty days, days in their match.
They get sixty dollars a day, currently. So, it's seventy-two hundred dollars.
So, this is pretty accurate, isn't it? This is what Chuck had made for us last, when we were talking about sick leave last fall.
Oh. I haven't seen that.
Do you remember when you did these, Chuck, last fall, when we were talking about sick leave? Just gives you kind of an idea, Randy.
Sixty dollars a day, so that's.
So, if you look through the columns, it's gonna give you, you know, kind of that breakdown, where their, where their community, they're always, so. That kind of gives you a better idea, so I may answer your question, that tier.
So, the maximum, Randy, is, and no matter what you make, you get sixty dollars a day, which is quite a bit less than what you would make, obviously, so. So, it's seventy-two hundred dollars is the max payout at this time. That was what was put in here, that was prior to pulling together this information, that was.
I, I think too, one of the things that before, we only got the sick leave pay, does she retire?
Well, it was, yeah, it said, it was, you had to be WRS, receiving, receiving WRS pension.
So, you moved the PD up to seventy, part of the negotiation, that's what, that's why we're not working, but, that's where.
Moved up from what?
Well, we did.
What's that? I guess, I'm, I'm pretty sure we moved the PDF to sixty-seven, Barrett, am I right? That was part of the.
I can grab it.
That was part of the deal, we were.
I recall the conversation.
And we're working on, we were working on different avenues, and, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that we moved the PDF, and we.
And we're working on, we were working on different avenues and, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that we moved the PDF and we talked, we would revisit the other employees when, when, uh, we got to-
But this was at all?
What's that?
Maybe that's why we suggested seventy.
That's what my guess would be. I mean, right, we didn't have ten, I'm trying to think of answers, but, yeah, but, like, a thousand dollars of payout, probably, it's like, which is one more, one more savings, so, the way it's of expense, and it's, uh, hopefully, we have a budget of course, but, I mean, do I have a ton of retirements?
Well, and this is, I mean, to get, you, you've been here quite a, quite a while when you have a significant payout, I mean, this is, you know, it's not, if somebody's here for five years, they generally aren't getting a lot of payout, obviously, because-
The users.
They're using some sick time here and there, and you, you don't build up, I mean, it's these, the employees that have been here a long time are the ones that have, you know, a lot of days and, you know, maybe more, that, that kind of another longevity payment, so to speak, but it's truly their sick time that they didn't use, I mean-
So are you, are you proposing, I didn't, maybe I missed that, are you proposing that before you had retired from the village again, are you proposing to change that?
That's changed in here, yes.
You're proposing a change?
Yep.
To me, that makes it easier for, for an employee to leave the village still too, I mean, by sometimes, I'm not saying that seven, eight thousand, I can give an employee, but, that someone's gonna, to stay in that job, they'll do a little bit, but, they, they can take that money what they want.
I think, looking at, digging through these comparables, and there's probably more information that I know because I went through these policies, but there's not many of them that require retirement, and as you see that, they're definitely a lot higher payouts than the other communities that were compared.
It is seventy dollars.
You know how many times it's been paid out?
Not very often.
But that will change now, when the school board comes, right, I mean, that'll, that'll affect budgets, I mean, that'll, that'll, and Jake, I mean, when he's actually over there, right?
No, with your, with your Wisconsin retirement pension.
No, that was the old-
Well, not according to their contract.
Their contract is different.
Right, oh, they have their contract, I'm sorry, okay.
Their contract is with, with, retire, unless they die in the line of duty, then it would get paid out to an heir.
And that discussion stemmed from, there are a lot of situations where people retire, but they don't start collecting on their WRS, and in that case, let's just say Chuck was, was not gonna start collecting right away, he's retiring from the village, should they not get their payout because of that?
I think, sure.
That was the discussion.
I, I, I understand, but, some of this, they're tenured, I don't want to pick on a place, or another, or another public works or something, and, I don't know how you would place that, you know, if someone retired, I don't know how you'd place it, you know, the separater, still, from how you do it. I understand Chuck's, uh, he decided to wait six months, that rights, he's not owed you more, right?
Any other questions, comments, chapter nineteen?
Yeah, are we gonna have a consensus on that, I mean, do we want to propose any different changes?
Well, it is the board's pleasure. Keith?
I'd be fine with a seventy dollars.
I'd support it.
Okay, Randy?
I'm satisfied with sixty. It's a good benefit, thinking of what, what other folks in the public sector receive, uh, so that's a very good, good benefit.
And I'd have to agree with Randy also. So you got two and two, Ann, it's up to you.
Well, I guess, I think for myself, I don't get separate sick time and vacation, I just get all the same, and when I leave, I, I get it, it's, it's a benefit I'm earning, and when I leave, it's something I take with me. I mean, I guess I'm okay changing it, and changing it to seventy, okay?
Can I, can I just rephrase that, I'm okay with changing to seventy, but I, I get, I guess I have to understand a bit of how, who's gonna be eligible to take it, I guess, I, I have to, I-
Anyone that leaves.
With the old language, with the old language staying at seven, I mean, it's going to seven, I'm good with, but I, I have to understand the other language a little bit better.
Anyone that leaves, that's basically who gets it.
I guess I don't support that, I support the seventy, but I don't support anybody that, that will.
I don't understand why.
Right now, you have to retire to get it.
Okay.
And I, I do, I, I think we need to find some better language to make sure we, somebody don't fall through the cracks, you know, like, like Chuck wasn't taking it, but, I'm not in support of someone that has ten years, taking it.
But it's gonna take a while for you to, to get to there.
You're not gonna get a hundred-and-twenty.
I mean, it's, you know, it's gonna take a many years to, to get to that one-twenty.
Yeah.
Takes ten years if you don't need to do a sick time.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, yeah, but this, with the PD, I don't want to pick on your department, you have a lot of turnover there, you know, there's, most of them don't stay ten years, as I said, they're here five years, so the benefit would be, uh, thirty-five hundred or four?
Maybe they'd stay longer.
No, this way they can take it with them, this would, this would, some of them, because they got to take them with them, so I-
Yeah, I think that was my point.
They take the own.
I don't think anybody's staying because they have a- A thousand dollars or twelve hundred dollars in a little savings account, so to speak.
It could be anywhere from, it could be anywhere from a hundred dollars to, to seven thousand.
No, but when you look at what other communities are paying out, they're paying out way more than we are, so it's pretty much worth it for me to jump and go somewhere else if I'm gonna get paid more than I am staying here, so, I mean, I don't know that it's an incentive to keep people.
It's not that high enough to keep to, for a seven.
I think it's a, I think it's a reward for good attendance, i- i- if you want to call it that, I mean, it, it's, it's-
It's another added expense, people's, farmers, which we have been doing in the past. I'd like to revisit this one again, next time we talk about this, I'd like to revisit this chapter.
Is everyone okay with that, we'll just, we'll just revisit this one, so chapter nineteen, we'll revisit that.
Is there any more information?
I don't know why we have to revisit it, I mean-
Together?
That, all, all of it's out there, either you support it or you don't. Go ahead, Randy.
Is it, just so the board knows, I retired from file county F with thirty-one years of service, I was able to, to accrue a hundred-and-five days of sick time, okay, that was my max, when I retired, I got, I lost half of the hundred-and-five days, okay, that's the board, the county board, that's what their policy, they made that change, then I was able to collect fifty percent of the twen, of the half, I'm sorry, I got, essentially, I got twenty-six days paid out of a hundred-and-five days when I retired. Just so you, you, you have an idea of what other agent, entities are, how they pay it in, in the, uh, public sector.
You get paid at your salary.
I'm sorry?
You got paid at your salary when you left.
Yes, I got paid at, um, what my hourly wage was, yeah.
What if, what if you left your job, you retired?
Was it the same thing?
I, I don't know, I, I, I mean, I, I, I don't know if, if that was allowable, I, I believe it is allowable, I believe it is allowable, um, but-
Mike, do you want to, want more information on that, some more comparable than that, see, you know, if people are doing that, where, where other communities are in, if they're allowing, like, taking that, if you don't retire.
How, how are the other located, you know, and how, and what?
It's all on here.
It's all, no.
Is it same thing at retirement?
It says, if, if it says at retirement, it's at retirement, resignation.
I'd, I'd like to table, I'd like to table, table, you guys got a lot of time to hash this over, you know, we, we got this tonight, and we need some time to look at some stuff, I mean, you guys will work on it for a year, so if we want a little time to-
Yeah, we're not approving it tonight, so we can, we can certainly, um-
We're gonna rehash the whole policy, you know, when we get all said and done, you know.
And, all I was asking, if you want more information, that's all I was wondering.
Well, you guys will.
It does, on here, there's like graded too, so we could consider like a fifty percent payout if you resign, and a hundred percent payout if you retire, that would be an option to kind of, I guess, cover up the costs.
Did you have something else, Keith?
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your flag.
Short, simple, what, what the financial thing's gonna cost the village, you know, I mean, it's hard to project that, but, um, I think vacancies are gonna be going up, and, uh, there'll be more problems for employees down the road, and it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be expensive for us, so, uh, how we're gonna, how we're gonna compensate that expense.
Could you go back a couple years, and if we had changed the policy, would you be able to tell what it would have cost us?
Possibly.
And could you maybe put in that scenario, some of these options, like, after five years, you would get, I mean, like this, I mean, I think this makes sense, like a percentage after a certain number of years?
We can suggest whatever, I, I, I guess I don't know what direction I, you want me to head, I mean-
Just look at a couple of different scenarios, what, what-
Yeah, a couple scenarios, like, what, I mean, what would it have been if we do it this way, maybe, I, I like the idea that they have in here, so, like, say, fifty percent after five years, and a hundred percent after ten, or something with these, maybe when you retire, you get a hundred?
Yeah, there's, so there's three or four of them that have, like, this graduated, yeah.
Could we see what the financial impact of payouts are?
Sure.
I mean, that might be a little more tolerable, I guess, than, than what they have in here now.
Oh, anything else, Ann, uh, Mike? So, we'll just revisit chapter nineteen, like you said, we're not approving this tonight, so we can get some more information on that and, and, uh, talk about that again. Moving on to, uh, chapter twenty, funeral leave, the, so there's a proposal to add, I believe, remove that, how long ago was that? A couple of years, Chuck, remember? A couple of years, the relative through blood or marriage, and, and, and it looks like it wants to be added back on, um, is anybody, everybody's got the, um, comparisons? They were at. Does anybody?
I think so, just, I mean, I think this was, decision was made by the board probably four or five years ago, and I'm surprised you were revisiting this decision again, so, that's-
So, are you in favor of just-
I'm not in favor of that, I believe, we, we had a position probably four or five years ago.
Keith, yeah, thank you, um, as I remember, I was on the board also four or five years ago, and I was not in favor of taking it away, so I think it is worth revisiting, I, I mean, relative through blood or marriage, I mean, you know, my wife's, I worked here, my wife's sister died, I mean, I'm sure my wife would want me there, um, or my, you know, daughter's husband, or, uh, I, I just think it's pretty cheap. I mean, it, it's not like it happens every single day, and I think it's just a goodwill thing, um, I just think it's pretty cheap.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
We never said nobody can go where Matt can go, so they always have that opportunity to go and stuff, like, so.
Yeah, you're, you know, we discussed this at length, you know, a few years ago, and, and I think that we offer pretty good, you know, comparing here, um, like, for me, I, I get two days, um, max for, um, like funeral leave for, say, stepmother, father, that type of thing, and then the rest, it's, like Mike said, we're not, the village isn't saying you can't, you know, have that time off to agree, it's just that it isn't, you know, it's, it's gotta be your, 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 um, your vacation time, um, and that's what I did too, I mean, I, I got two days off from work, and I, I took four more days off because I needed that, so, um, I think our policy, and, and if you look at these comparisons too, are, they look pretty good, and, and I think it was the right decision what we did, what we did a couple of years ago. Randy or Ann, do you want to weigh in on this one, or? Ann?
I agree though, I mean, I think, I mean, if I look at it, it seems like there's a lot of vacation that we're giving, and like you said, that's not where, I'm not saying you can't go, just that the village doesn't give you the, the day to go, and if you're, or not, other villages don't give you there.
Randy?
I think, uh, I agree with, uh, the way that the board, um, decided years ago, like, looking at, looking at these, um, pretty generous, and I think, you know, we certainly, we certainly give, um, adequate time and, like, you know, I would think most people have some time that they could take, you know, if they had to, whether it's given a day, or relative to the blood or marriage.
Is there any other discussion on, on the, uh, chapter twenty, on funeral leave?
I think there was some comments about possibly budgeting some money for donations or flowers for media spending, you know, it's not even here, but somebody brought it up later, that I'm like, so.
I did, I'd budget, I, I was gonna bring it up on another agenda, but I just have a, I say, like, a slush fund of two hundred dollars, um, to be used, you know, if somebody's significant other or, or whatever passes away, um, sending flowers from, from the village.
Anybody have any comments on that?
I just offer my two cents and-
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, I think the school, I think the state also has a, a fund, it's, I think the school has a sunset fund or sunrise or some kind of fund where employees throw, all throw in ten dollars a year, and things like that come up, um, that's what they use that funding for, so, um, this is taxpayer's money, so I, I think, uh, maybe just having everybody throwing a bunch of money once a year and, uh, work it back there.
Yeah, that's what we do at work also, we're not, we, we don't, do flowers, it's just not a budgeted thing, and we always take up a, a donation from, uh, employees that knew the person.
I agree, I'm, we, I think if you're ready to do something like that, you should have like a sunshine fund, donate, put money in, I don't think it should be a budgeted, uh, budgeted item.
And any question or comments?
No, I, I would say, in my work, the work we're just came for, but I mean, it's a different environment than, uh-
All right, is there anything else on chapter twenty, on funeral leave? And then, um, I only go up to like chapter twenty-one, so civil leave, is there any questions on civil leave? Did, um, did something get taken out of here, Mike, do you know, like, um, is like in this one from two thousand and sixteen, there's like, uh-
Yeah, this isn't all of it.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, then, okay, so, I mean, for chapter twenty-one, is that it for chapter twenty-one?
I believe so, or you're asking twenty-one, I think that's the end of twenty-one, I think it's just through, through twenty is what we're, twenty-one might not, is more than that.
Okay, so just go up at twenty?
Yeah.
Okay, so that concludes, uh, our policy review up to, uh, chapter twenty, and then we will, um, press on future board meetings, thank you, everybody, for, uh, sitting through that, that was, that's never fun, but necessary. All right, so, moving down to resolutions, discussion and possible action on approving resolution eight dash twenty-eighteen, a resolution designating authorized designees to make payments or withdrawals from village accounts.
This is just, uh, updating my name instead of Chuck's name, this, this resolution was actually just passed a couple of months ago, we're updating it.
Does anybody have any questions, they understand what we're doing here with this resolution, all right, um, need a motion to, uh, to approve resolution eight dash two thousand and eighteen?
I'll make that motion.
All right, I got a second, please.
Oh, second.
All right, we got a motion by Randy, a second by Mike, uh, the resolution designated authorized designees to make payments or withdrawals from village accounts, is there any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Ordinances, number one, discussion and possible action on ordinance twenty eighteen zero, twenty eighteen dash, was that package? Oh, anyway, of an ordinance amending section twenty-one, one zero two, sub six, mobile homes, trailers, boat, snowmobiles, semis, buses, second reading. So that is the one that we had the public hearing on?
Correct.
So, um, is that gonna change in the future, I know we talked a little bit about that, we're gonna continue doing the first and second readings, just so folks have, I know we had talked a little about that, if it was uh, necessary to do both?
We always have to first and second read, we don't have to public hearings for everything.
Okay.
Public hearing is just chapter twenty-one for the most part.
Okay, all right, cool, thank you. All right, so can I get a motion to approve ordinance twenty eighteen dash eight?
So vote.
You got a second?
I second that.
Got a motion by uh, Mike, second by Ann, to approve ordinance twenty eighteen dash eight to amend section twenty-one point zero two sub six, can I get a roll call please?
Sorry, King.
Yeah.
Price.
Yes.
Streeter.
Yes.
Stutz.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Didn't we talk about this last time when I wasn't here?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I was just, okay.
Uh, discussion and possible action on ordinance twenty eighteen dash nine, an ordinance amending section sixteen point zero one, pool parking, pool parking lot, second reading.
Do you want me to summarize it?
Sure.
I would, because I wasn't part of that discussion.
Sure, um, this is for. Sorry, on the wrong page, um, village pool has been, is much busier than it used to be, um, there's having issues with not enough parking stalls, um, from a public work standpoint, from a policing standpoint, we feel that it should be used for pu, for pool parking only. And uh, creating some issues, so we proposed, um, just that the parking lot show at all times, we respect the pool staff, village employees and patrons of the pool.
The other thing too is students were parked there too, and with the expansion of the parking lot for the high school now, they're gonna have enough parking there so students, because if they're not on school grounds, you can't police it, so now that all parking is required on the ground, you can't police it.
Keith?
And we also, thank you, we also have a lot of neighbors and everything else that are parking their vehicles in there, and the, the pool is very busy this time of year, it's really been busy, and we should let the people that paid for the passes and that are paying to go into the pool, to be able to park, they're not people that just have too many vehicles and have nowhere else to park them.
Ann?
I thought last time we talked about making it only in the summer, only pool parking and in the winter, because people can't park on the, the street?
I think we talked a little bit about that also. I think that's part of what, uh, that's part of what upsets other residents of the village, because, um, like, we don't let people park in this lot during the winter because they can't park on the street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so we're trying to make this even across the board, um, believe it or not, and I could walk in and grab two or three right now and walk back in here, letters that we get from the community all the time complaining about that, um, that, uh, they're meant to be. Parking facilities for a specific use, not for people who just have too many vehicles and too much stuff to park it on their own property.
And we plowed that in the wintertime?
I'm sorry, what?
We plowed that in the wintertime?
No, the school, the school plowed it for overflow parking for the school.
Oh, okay, but they're not gonna do that anymore?
No, they're, yeah, they have more than enough room.
So it'll just be full, it's no longer wintertime anyways, okay, thank you.
And Laura, did you have anything to add, I know you were, um.
No, I, I just, like I said, I, I think that if, just an idea, last Thursday night, I was there and there were forty-two cars in the parking lot, so it's constantly busy right now, um, and then after talking at length with, uh, here and say it off, they are putting sixty-four extra parking lots in their parking lot. So as far as, you know, some of the smaller buses that park there and that kind of stuff, that problem will be gone, if you agree a hundred percent, you would greatly appreciate not a lot of parking in that lot, um, that would be really good.
Okay, thank you, Laura, so is there any other questions, comments regarding this ordinance?
I just have a.
Yeah, Mike?
Just a, something we're doing, does the school allow, do you ever park in their parking lot at all, does the, does the school allow, you ever see the school allow people parking in their parking lot?
No.
I mean, some, I'm just saying, if you don't see it over there, so I guess why, why should be, be, be different, I just, especially now with the new parking right there in front, you wonder if people try to sneak in there.
I agree, our parks are technically supposed to be close to vehicles too, a couple of ninety-nine hours, I just, I don't think, it's not, we just, I want to be sure of that.
So this should take care of some, all those headaches that we've been dealing with.
And we did, just to FYI, I guess, like, chief decided he would have one of his officers go and talk to the neighbors that regularly use it, just to let them know that it's changed.
Anything else, I get a motion to approve this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve twenty eighteen dash zero nine.
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion by King, second by Stutz, to approve the uh, section sixteen point zero one for pool parking lot, can I get a roll call please?
King.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Streeter.
Yes.
Stutz.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
All right, communications, any communications? Um, I just like say one, one more, you know, um, wish Chuck good luck in his retirement, and we appreciate, like, I know we've, we've had a lot of screwy budgets over the years and appreciate your creativity and all the help you do with the, the computers and stuff that saved us book money, you know, so that was, that was nice and, and um. And uh, we look forward to seeing how your mentoring worked with, I'm just kidding, so we'll see, uh, next chapter and, and uh, look forward to working with Nick, so, um, we just wanted to, again, uh, wish Chuck good luck in his retirement.
Thanks, Chuck.
And certainly we'll see you around the village. So, any other communications?
Yeah.
Keith, I'm sorry.
I, I would also like to thank you, Chuck, I mean, I uh, I came on the board when you uh, left the board and, and became a, an administrator and, and you were a great help to me when I first started out, you took the time to, to make sure I thoroughly understood everything and, and introduced me to all the department heads and, and uh, really explained a lot of things to me and I, I really appreciate that, you did it, I think you did a great job.
Anybody else? All right, uh, we'll move down to unfinished business, anybody have any unfinished business? Any new business? All right, I need a motion to go into closed session, please.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session, discussion of a personal issue under Wisconsin state statutes nineteen eighty-one, eighty-five, sub one C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation. Uh, date of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, number one, staffing.
All righty, uh, can I get a second please?
Oh, second.
Got a motion by King, second by Will, can I get a roll call to go into some closed session, please?
King.
Yeah.
Price.
Yes.
Streeter.
Yes.
Stutz.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
All right, we are in closed session, thank you everybody for coming.